All right, good evening. Welcome to the September ninth, two thousand and fourteen, meeting of the Manchester Town Council. First order of business is the approval of the August twelfth and August fourteenth minutes. So I was at the August twelfth, but not at the August fourteenth. Just as a refresher, we did have that August fourteenth meeting because we wasn't at Quorum at the August twelfth, and we had a few business items that we had to take care of. So I think that we can probably approve these together because it was really the same business model.
Make a motion to approve the August twelfth and August fourteenth minutes.
I second that.
Motion to second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Second received of the August two thousand and fourteen check register. Should have that here in front of you. So the motion we can receive that.
I make a motion, we receive the August check register.
I second the motion.
Motion to second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, Mayor's report. I just have a couple of quick items here. Sure as everybody knows, the school was back in session then for a couple of weeks. There's going to be more traffic on the streets, so it'll take a little bit of extra time in the morning. I don't normally witness this stuff. Did witness somebody accidentally blow by a school bus this morning, right over here by, on the other side of Route thirty. Then he stopped about halfway through the bus and then backed up again, and so. Just take care and take caution. A lot of youngsters out there standing on the side of the streets and running around and balls rolling in the street while they're waiting for the buses. We had the Maverick stampede last week. I don't know if everybody had a chance to stop that, but that event is getting larger every year, it seems to be. It's really becoming somewhat of a tradition over there, so that's a, it seems to be a good thing. And I know it's early, a little bit early, but it's not. You can't believe it's this late, but Halloween is next month again already. It is on a Friday, so we won't have to have our yearly debate about whether or not we're going to have it on a Friday or the regular day, so. Six thirty to eight thirty is what we always do.
Six thirty.
Six thirty. So that's going to be here before you know it. That's all I have. Actually, we have a swearing in. Chris Tomlinson. If you're okay, we can do the swearing in right now. So Chris is taking an oath to be a member of the Board of Zoning Appeals. Do you mind coming up? I warn you, I always read this wrong, so incorrect that this is. So I state your name.
Chris Tomlinson.
Do affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and that I will be faithful and will bear true allegiance to the State of Maryland and will support the Constitution and laws thereof, and that I will, to the best of my skill and judgment diligently and faithfully without partiality or prejudice, execute the office of Board of Zoning Appeals member according to the Constitution, almost, and laws of the state.
Yes.
Good enough. All right, congratulations. Yeah, Chris, if you don't mind taking this and bringing this over to Kelly and sign it. Steve?
Okay, good evening, Mayor and Council. We'll go ahead and start with the August twenty fourteen administrative report. There's been no changes on the following projects, the Sheets project, the S H A projects, or the Verizon projects. Our M E A grant, we received bids yesterday. They're currently under review, and that's two bids from two different suppliers for thermostat installation and heater installation at some of our sites. Our Civil Wars Heritage Trails grant, the ADA improvements to this building, we've done some preliminary work. We've hit a small bump in the road, but it's, we're redesigning our ADA ramp coming into the building, so we're moving ahead on that. Our Community Legacy Revitalization Grant, there's been no change on that. We haven't heard anything on that grant. We did receive approval for forty-five thousand dollars for an inclusive playground at Christmas Tree Park, and that was through Community Parks and Playgrounds. We did meet, our staff met with Ms. Bridget Miller, the founder of Hallie's Wish, last week, and we have a plan in place also tomorrow afternoon. We're meeting with a supplier to throw our ideas out at that supplier and see what they think about that, so that's a plus. Our new town hall police station, a complete demo of the current structure will hopefully take place next week. C J Miller Incorporated won the bid for the demo for the building. We did have store borrowings. That took place on August the twenty-third. Councilperson Wilder and our attorney reviewed the contract with Mr. Kamlin to move into the civil and structural and electrical engineering work in the stormwater items, and that came back with a good review, so I'll probably sign that contract tomorrow for the design contract bid on that, so we're moving ahead on that. Under code enforcement, yesterday Chief Hess and myself, Councilperson Smith, and some staff members, Michelle Wilder was there, Steve Quabell was there representing the auxiliary police. We met with Mr. Jim Osborne. Jim is the owner of the Chestnut Street Apartments. We opened up a dialogue with Mr. Osborne, I think with some cooperation between both the town and also Mr. Osborne. Hopefully, we can iron out some issues that we have out there. I know, you know, I believe and I feel pretty comfortable between the two of us, we can work out any issues along the way. Also, the update of the code is moving forward. We do have some issues within our code that we have to straighten out, so that's moving ahead. I believe Mayor Warner has reached out to a few of you to serve on a work group on that committee. Under miscellaneous items, on August the sixth, Kelly and I met with Mike Fowler. Mike is the municipal representative for Manchester through B G and E. He also brought along three other B G and E reps in regards to any problems that we may have. We did pose three issues to them. Two of the three have been resolved. One item is, we're working with B G and Verizon on some corrections throughout the town as far as the pole replacement on York Street, the concrete work that was done, and some loose and dangling wires that we have throughout. Our natural gas line installation, the town hall was completed on August the fourteenth. I want to remind everybody about the district M M L meeting at New Windsor on September the eighteenth. And Ms. Patty Garner, she's working on receiving her master's degree in public administration from Shippensburg. She has been shattering Kelly and I for the last several weeks. Actually, Patty is Officer Ron Garner's daughter, and she's doing an excellent job. We gave her three projects to work on. I think she picked one, and she's moving forward on that, so we're pretty happy with her. Any questions on the administrative report? Okay, moving right ahead, you have in front of you the August twenty fourteen monthly water and wastewater report. The Manchester Valley High School Water Pumping Station is up and running. That particular station actually treats three wells coming into it, and those wells have a above-normal nitrate level, so we do treat for nitrates down there, so that is currently online. Want to welcome a new wastewater operator, Mr. Caleb Matthews, who started with the town on August the twenty-eighth. Let me come back to the next item here. The tree planting project with Carroll County on the town property at Manchester Farms, the R F B is currently on the street through the county, and Carroll Land Services has been awarded the bid from Carroll County in regards to the conceptual and design of the stormwater management facility at the skate park off of Route twenty-seven. Today, we had a meeting. The W R C C had its second in-depth meeting on the final draft of the M O I between the county and the municipalities. Let me bring you up to speed on where we're at. As of today, all the municipal attorneys and the county attorney has reviewed the M O I between the county and the towns. It was turned over, back over to the W R C C. Today, we finished our review, adding in the comments that every attorney throughout the county had. We got hung up on one item, and that one specific item is a rate increase of up to ten percent each year to cover the possibility of increased cost through the life of the agreement, which is five years. What we're going to be doing is, we're going to be putting together a chart that will show each and every municipality what the additional charge will be in each consecutive year. What we're looking at is, at the end of four years, four years of the contract, there may be a possibility that there may be monies brought back to the towns which were not expended, or there could be a possibility that the end of that four years, the rate of increase was not enough to cover what's needed. Chances are, chances are, a good possibility that there'll be money coming back to the town. So we're going to wrap all this up. It'll probably be in draft form tomorrow by the end of the day. I will get it out to you folks, let you folks review it. We need to get our comments back to the W R C C by September the twenty-fourth, which is our next meeting. Actually, it'll be October the first, which is our next meeting. Once we get all those comments back, then it's going to come to you folks at our October, I believe it's our October eighth meeting. I'm sorry, the October fourteenth meeting, where you folks can approve Mayor Warner to sign onto this document on October the twenty-third when the mayors and the commissioners meet. It's been a long process. Today, we spent over five, almost six hours going over this. We have a very good document. As I said before, we were trying to take all the attorney's comments and trying to wrap them up and include them into the document, so. It's finished. As I said, I'll get it out to you tomorrow. It'll probably be done by the end of the day tomorrow, and I'll get it out to everybody for their review, so. Any questions on that? Real quick, maintenance roads and parks. The installation of the sundial at Charles Quest Nature Center took place on August the twentieth. I want to thank Mr. Bob Clark, a member of the Westminster Astronomical Society for supplying this, and also Charlotte's Quest Nature Center Board Member Bill Skinner for assisting in the installation. Community parks and playground application was submitted in regards to, again, requesting funding for new lights and poles on Field D at Christmas Tree Park. We have a meeting with B G and E next Wednesday, and we may get some assistance from them on new lighting up there at the park. And also, since the Manchester Valley High School Pumping Station is online and we have all that construction finished down there, we're going to be working on reinstalling the "Welcome to Manchester" sign on the south end of town. That may be a project between the Board of Education, students at Manchester Valley High School, and the town of Manchester. That's it. Any questions for me?
Steve, the lights are considering it'd be a new configuration, just replacing what's there.
It would be new poles, possibly new configuration, definitely new wiring. It would be a whole new package, right?
And Steve, I think I was talking to some people that even the, you and I went through this a couple of years ago, where we looked at things that even the last couple of years, things have changed and progressed even more, where now they're using some LED technology. I guess that's gotten brighter. So I think one of the challenges a couple of years ago was that, if you were looking at, like, I guess, the right field side of D, which is, is a big drop. So you have the drop and the distance from that hill all the way down to D, so there was, that kind of jacked up the price of what was being considered.
Correct.
Where now, maybe some of that has changed.
Right.
So we'll see. But things are definitely getting kind of antiquated up there. Any questions for Steve? Police report, chief?
Good evening, everybody. Manchester Police Department responded to sixty-four calls for service. We've only had to conduct five arrests. We did have three thefts this go-around. They were minor thefts, one of which involved a overseas fraud case. The suspects are in Nigeria, so I don't think we're going to be latching one of them anytime soon. All in all, it was a great month. My officer, who's been here for about six years, I hate to even say this, is, he said it's been a very quiet summer. We've had a good summer with crime, and we seem to be moving forward and getting closer with the community, and I think that's a big part of it. Everybody's talking. When we do have something that's starting to head in the wrong direction, the community's talking to us, and it enables us to get in front of it. We did have three assault arrests. Most of them were domestic-related, and we had to conduct a smooth operator program. Traffic enforcement, that was mainly on twenty-seven and thirty. Everybody in the state pretty much gets involved, and it basically is to make the roads safer. And during that time, we issued eleven state citations and sixteen warnings. As we all know, National Light Out was a hit. I'm still getting emails. People want to join on with us next year. They definitely want to be part of it. Manchester Valley High School, Dr. Fisher, Principal Fisher, he wants to start a advisory board slash council board, and he's asked that I sit on the board with him, and I believe it was an open invitation to the council as well. He's going to be starting that September fifteenth. And the ultimate goal there is just to bring the community closer, come up with some new ideas, and take Manchester into the future and join forces with Lineboro, bringing everybody on board and acting as one partnership. Outside of that, everything's been going well. We did meet with Mr. Osborne for the Chestnut Street community. I was pretty optimistic after the meeting. I think that he truly wants to get on board with us and clean up that area and make that area a safer place. Anybody have any questions?
Seatbelt month coming up soon?
I believe that's in October, yes. Click it or tick it.
I think it's April, May.
Well, there's, they're also doing, there's a string of enforcement in October as well. It's all grant-related.
Because if you have plans for how you plan to address it, I'd like to understand this. Make sure you use your seatbelt that month.
No, in the past, I wasn't real pleased with how things were conducted. Way in the past.
Yeah, if we can find ways to, I guess, catch up on, later on about that. Not grind traffic to a halt in town at rush hour.
Rush hour. That's not going to happen. Route thirty has enough problems.
I was going to be careful how I said it, but I decided just to say it. Back it up halfway down the by bands. Yeah.
The light at Maple Grove never seems to click. The backup goes all the way to the circle. We won't conduct in heavy.
I saw they were removing trees right in front of the elementary school while the buses were trying to turn in this morning, right at school arrival time.
The B G and E crew, yes.
Yeah.
And over close to Hallie as well.
All right, any else for the chief? And that's not really his, but. Do we have, just kind of a little intense, anybody from the community that'd like to speak? Do you mind coming up? We don't have the middle mic'd that way everybody.
My name is George Huffman. I live.
Might speak into this, right? Because we record the meetings.
And I've had people ask me about the town ponds. What's going on?
What street do you live on?
Walnut Street.
Okay.
And I don't really know what to tell them. When I first lived there, that pond was in excellent condition. It was young. But anyway, so is there a plan to deal with not just the Walnut Street pond, but the ponds at Christmas Tree Park? You guys, I mean, I've heard nothing. I don't know what to tell people when they ask me.
And Steve, maybe you can, I know we did some work on the Walnut Street pond a few years ago.
We have not. We received a grant through Trout Unlimited to do an upgrade to the Walnut Street pond. That pond has to be deepened because apparently the water that's going back out of the stream is too warm. So they've come in, the company that received the contract has come in and put some temperature sensors in there, and they're doing some preliminary work. I believe, I can't say for sure, but I think that work may begin sometime in two thousand and fifteen. Right now, the design is being completed, the design work, the architectural design.
I understand they're going to put a drain at the bottom of the pond in order to.
I can't answer, I can't answer that. I don't know, because I haven't seen any, any design work on it yet, so I can't.
Yeah, I can't imagine. How would you keep that drain clear if it's at the bottom?
Right.
It seems like it would fill up with debris.
Correct.
Very quickly.
Can't answer that.
It seems like it would. I don't know how it would.
To answer the question on the Water Street pond, once we're completed that project down there, we're going to apply for another grant for that pond out there.
Now, there are three ponds. There are.
Yes, there's an overflow pond beyond the main pond on Water Street, correct. Yes, the third one off of Water Street's not on town property. That's one private piece of property down there.
Yeah, that's an impressive natural feature to have three step ponds. That's unusual for Maryland. You see it in the Rocky Mountains, but that's pretty amazing. I thought there were only two, and I remember walking down there, walking my dog, and seeing there were actually three at, you know, descending levels.
Correct.
But anyway, no plan to deal with those?
Not at this time. I'm saying, they could be, we may be looking at maybe, maybe, I would say, four years out for those ponds up there. We want to take care of this pond first and then move into that, into that area up there.
So I guess when you say, when you say "take care of," there's probably a couple of things to consider, right? It was kind of like the actual operation of the pond, whether it's operating or draining the way it should. And I think if you mean in terms of aesthetically or to incorporate it into, is this more of a feature that's enjoyable to walk around?
Well, all the above.
Yeah.
One of the issues, well, ponds, they tend to accumulate organic matter with time, and I guess that pond was built in the early seventies or mid-seventies. I'm not sure.
I can't answer that. I'd say, I'd say probably the mid to late sixties, early seventies, probably, yeah.
But one of the problems that has accelerated its sort of decline is several times I've seen people dump aquariums, like literally dump aquariums in there, and there's hydrilla, which is an Asian aquatic weed, and that has just ruined that pond.
Is this Walnut Street?
Correct.
I notice there is a lot of algae in there now.
Well, if you look closely, you'll see it's actually algae, and there's an underwater vine. Now, the bitter cold winter really kind of reduced the amount of hydrilla. Anyway, my only concern and comment is that I heard an estimate of forty to fifty thousand dollars to renovate that pond, and just based on what I've seen, somebody's going to dump another aquarium in there, and you're going to end up with the same problem. I don't know how you would prevent people from doing that.
Right.
I mean, you need a twenty-four-hour security.
That would be tough to do, right?
Yeah, I'll see how you could do it.
I know the pond on Water Street, I know the same situation. People put in water lilies from their private ponds behind their, in their backyard, and that just created the whole issue up there. I mean, that whole side of that one pond is completely full of water lilies now.
Yeah, at least they're native, they're native plants, whereas the hydrilla is not.
Right.
But anyway, well, I guess that covers it.
Well, we can try signage, like we've, you know, but that doesn't always work, you know.
Yeah, it's interesting. I don't see, when I first lived there, twenty-five years ago, there were a lot, there was a lot of fishing going on. These days, it's rare to see someone now, and part of it is because the quality of the pond has gone down. It's not stocked by the D N R. But also, I think it's just that people are not spending time outdoors like they used to, particularly kids.
My son caught a bass in the pond a couple of weeks ago in Walnut Street. It wasn't exceptionally big.
Right, yeah, there's still some, mostly bluegill.
Yeah, they caught some bluegill too, but it was, I want to say, maybe an eight or nine-inch smallmouth. So it wouldn't have been years old, so maybe they're still getting some.
Yeah, there are a few. They're catfishing there too. But that's another thing. I hear the D N R is not particularly generous as far as stocking ponds like they used to be. I don't know if that's true or not, but.
I don't know.
Yeah, they're pretty tight with their money nowadays, so. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, I guess signage, because I'm sure the average person doesn't understand there's a problem with dumping aquarium into a pond. Seems natural to do that.
They don't want to kill their goldfish, so I guess they have to get rid of them. They're moving, and they don't want to do it.
Each person has no idea what's being done.
Yeah, I know that up in Maine, fishing is a big industry in the lakes up there. It's tourism. And Maine has actually come down hard on possession of goldfish. So that, I mean, it's actually a serious crime just to possess a goldfish in Maine. Kind of hard to believe, but some man at a Chinese restaurant had an aquarium with goldfish, and they got in serious trouble.
Wow.
But Maryland has no such restriction.
I don't know, maybe there's signs out there. I mean, I know we have places where we purchase signs where we have poles up there that say, I think, catch and release and no swimming.
Right, we can have custom signs made. That's not a problem.
And maybe there's, and maybe there's some language we can talk about that, other than just like, you know, no fish dumping or something, but maybe there's something that, you know, like something to the effect of, you know.
I don't think it would do much good.
Well, we tried it on the dumpster. I don't know if that did much good either, but. You know, but I see, like you said, twenty-four-hour security, all the ponds probably isn't feasible either. So we can start with, sometimes, you know, a sign or education can stop seventy or eighty percent of it.
There is one natural solution to the hydrilla and invasive plants. It's a type of carp called triploid grass-eating carp. Triploid meaning their DNA, they can't reproduce. The melanin ours, I don't know if you're familiar with them, would need a permit to put them in the pond. But they apparently eat all those invasive plants.
Triploid.
Triploid meaning their chromosomes are triple and centotile.
Triploid is a carp.
Triploid, grass-eating carp. Yes, I got it.
It's a biological solution.
They cannot do with it.
In fact, if you put them in there now, you may, it could take care of the problem. It's solved the water discharge.
Could it help out, since we're running four years behind on that project? What would help out out up there? I wonder if they would help that pond?
I would think so, yes.
So you need a, you need a permit from D N R to put them in?
Yeah, they're classified as an invasive species. But they are an effective and cheap biological solution. And the idea is they cannot reproduce like snakeheads. Yeah, I mean, they just move out their life, but I think two of them are on that side.
That's good to know. I'll contact D N R, because again, we're four years out up there, so.
Yeah, apparently it takes them about a year. If you have two or three, about a year, the pond would be a lot cleaner.
Right. All right, very good.
Okay. Anybody else? Go to committee reports. Councilman Smith?
I have a meeting on Thursday with capable commissioners, so I don't have anything to report on that, and really, nothing on the rental housing except for what Steve discussed earlier, so that's all for me.
Right. All right, Councilman Black?
Planning and zoning did have a meeting on August nineteenth, and there wasn't a lengthy meeting, but we did talk to folks about the Western Abbey and their request for an increased density on some units from a previous approved area of houses. And so we did approve that contingent on a few things and some county approvals, of course, so.
That's one, the end of Hilltop? What density were they going to?
They are moving from, all right, asking me all these questions. Hold on, here, I can show you. They are moving from a previous one, and what they were doing, they had some units that were going to be, they found out, they found a product that does well in Manchester, and they kind of survived a really hard season, and they moved through that, and they found out what product works well, and they're very high-quality, lovely facilities, homes. So they were moving from twelve units to nine, twelve, I guess almost, I guess nineteen. Am I right, Steve? I mean, I mean, Michelle here, but that's what, yeah, and so it's the same foot, it's the same footprint space. So there was some questions from planning and zoning about, you know, the traffic and that, and we're talking just a couple of extra houses in terms of the traffic and things. But these are generally, these are older, you know, folks.
Same thing they have up the Chauncey.
Not going to have children.
Yes.
Same kind of units?
Yeah, and so. Yeah, and so.
I don't know if we've had any problems over there, have we?
Nah, we have not, very, very nice, our, yeah, both are retirement communities, Manchester Manor and Cass, we feel a great bunch of people back in there. Works out real good, has a complex, works out good for the town.
So anyway, when you look at the number of people living in this space, it's not that, that many.
Right.
But anyway, like I said, it's, yeah, it's a nice, it's a nice product, and um, they're very self-contained in terms of their own maintenance and so forth, so. So that moved on, and we're gonna be looking at Manchester Farm Section Seven here soon, so.
Very good, Councilman Lawler?
Um, I took a look at the joint use agreement between the North Carra Council and the town of Manchester. Uh, made some corrections, added some new provisions, I didn't bother to send it to the council, I didn't think it was practical to take the whole council through many iterations of this. I did send a copy to Ryan and Steve, since they're very familiar with the issues that we have. Uh, to get some feedback from Steve, soon as I get, get uh, feedback from Ryan, I'll put it all together into kind of a draft final, and then I'll send it to the council to take a look at uh, what we've put together.
Yeah, I, I owe you that, I did, I did make a run at it, I just didn't send it back to you yet, so I'll get that over to you.
And that's it.
Anything else? Well, motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn?
All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Good night.